This is just a quick mic test for our YouTube stream, uh, testing the YouTube audio to make sure that everything sounds correct. Wilson and Lessons. President Hallman will be with us shortly. Um, also in the room are Dr. Bryant, our executive secretary, America Sullivan and associated staff. First item, now that we've called ourselves to order and conducted a roll call is board request for information. We have a few different items currently pending on our list and no items currently that need to be prioritized by the board. Um, are there additional requests for information that we want to categorize at this time? I apologize. We also need to recognize that member Bellamy is online. Uh, member Donley, you have a request for information item to be categorized?
Yeah, regarding resolution oh one six, it's before the, on the action calendar tonight. Um, I'm just wondering what resources the administration used in coming up with the definitions of harassment and bullying?
I would propose that we address that since it's on the action item for, uh, business tonight that we address it during the meeting. Dr. Brian, do you oppose?
No, that makes sense to me, Mr. Chair.
Okay, member Donley, any opposition to that?
No, but that's a question I'm gonna raise.
Like to appreciate the heads up, member Donley, any other items to be added to our RFI log? Member Lessons?
I'm not sure if this is appropriate for an RFA. It's following up on a couple of emails we received, which may have been resolved, but I just don't remember receiving the resolution. And that was, uh, with respect to sixth grade math. Um, you know, the direction this is going?
Yes, the issue's been resolved and board members will receive an update with the details. It's very nuanced in Board Connect.
Okay. Any other items to be categorized for a request for information? Okay, hearing seeing none. Move on to C1, uh, board travel. This was a discussion that, um, President Holloman asked to be added to our work session agenda. Um, as a reminder, um, when our budget process, um, was underway and the, um, board was considering items to be part of our budget solution for FY25, the board chose to zero out the board travel line item. Um, President Holloman said he's received requests for, um, potential travel by the board members and we wanted to have a discussion whether or not the board wanted to consider, um, modifying the district budget to reflect additional funds for board travel, or if we were content with that decision. Um, are there thoughts and perspective on this item? The question before us really is, should we leave the board? Travel line item at a zero dollar amount to indicate the board will not be traveling, uh, or should that be changed? Member Higgins?
Oh. Okay, thank you. Um, in the past, school board has done travel associated with things such as the Alaska, uh, uh, the National School Board Association, where a lot of innovation and changes that are going on throughout the nation is being discussed. Um, I know that Margo talked about going last time and I went the time before then in which AI was a big discussion. This time in April, that's the big discussion that's gonna take place. How is AI? Being addressed within other schools and what are they doing and how are they gonna handle it? Uh, is in April, I know that in October is when, uh, the large part of the urban schools, uh, within the National School Board Association will be meeting and they have been real valuable. I, uh, my view is, is that it's a very critical issue for the school board to be aware of these. It's made a difference from what we've done in the past. I think it would be real beneficial. I think I would love for the superintendent to attend the National School Board Association in April. Because that's a, that's the biggie, okay, on AI. Uh, when I attended the last one, uh, one of the two people that created AI was they were providing a discussion and it was really good. So, um, the budget is, I understand, has a budget for travel for the school district, so it's really not segregated out. So the, so the budget is not the big issue. The big issue is, what do we want to do? And how do we want to do it from my understanding? And I would, you know, in the past, what we've done is school board members have been allowed to go to one of them. You got the council of great city schools for those that wanna go to that or want editorialize, uh, National School Board Association. And now the third one is the urban school, Coop, Cube, uh, is the big one. But I think it's really beneficial for ASD to be present in all three of those. Um, and at least two of them, um, that's my editorial comment. Uh, in line with it, and I think it would be really important. We also have travel that we do, uh, to Juneau. And we're a lobby group for the Anchorage School District and all the students and staff. And, um, that's important for our community. We've been effective, uh, within that at times and sometimes it's difficult, but we don't know what's gonna happen this time. So I, I think, um, it's just a commitment from the board. How much are people going to invest in time to do this and recognize this is a relatively small cost compared to the benefits associated with it? Uh, within that, and there's a lot of some really exciting stuff that's going on out there.
So there's perspective regarding using the, the general line item in our budget, um, which is different than past years where we've had a specific board line item for, for member travel. Member Lessons?
Um, thank you. I think I'd like to phone a friend and ask for a little bit of perspective. If my memory serves me, we also zeroed out essentially all travel district wide in an initial budget. And at some point that was changed because it was deemed really, uh, not optimal, but now, um, you know, there's a small pool of money that's being held for some amount of district travel. So I just, could you speak to that a little bit?
Uh, sure, thank you. Um, so for FY25, we reduced the travel by about 330,000 and put a hundred thousand dollars in a centralized account for district-wide travel for employees, including school board members. So every department, every school had the travel. Essentially zeroed out at that point, but it is a, a small set of money, um, in a district-wide account that we can push out as needed to those who really do need to travel, whether it's to Juneau or if the school board wanted to travel. Um, I think Mr. Holloman's, uh, raised the issue because he wanted to be transparent with making sure that that money for the school board, if you are traveling, does show up in their account and, um, the public knows that the school board's using this money. Uh, if the school board wanted to use that hundred thousand dollars or some of a portion of it to travel, we, it would eventually show up in the school board's account because we'd have to pay it out of there to keep our book straight. But, um, that necessarily not wouldn't necessarily be reported until after the year's end and we're doing our financial statements, given the small dollar value of each, each time someone travels. You know, if it was the board's desire to be a little more transparent on it and like even in the form of an amendment for this current budget, um, you could you move 20 or 25,000 over from that hundred thousand over to the board's account too. Uh, just so you kind of see the process of where you've allocated it. And typically the board spent about 20 or 25,000 dollars a year in travel. So, does that help?
That, that does. So, um, I think, what I think I heard you say at the start of that is that generally the district as a whole spends 330,000?
We had 430,000.
By 75%.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I see value in board member travel because we do have to make decisions that affect the district as a whole. However, taking 20 or 25,000 dollars of essentially a hundred thousand seems a little bit, um, self-serving, uh, not self-serving, that's not the right word. Uh, it seems like a larger share of the pie than is needed. So I would support trimming the board's portion of things proportionally down from 20 or 25, you know, down to maybe 75, maybe $7,000 is the right number. And you get a thousand dollars a person or something to that effect. Um, I don't think that board members need to take per diems, um, that adds up. So I don't know, maybe there's a compromise here where we can still be participants, but also not take a disproportionate share of necessary district travel for other, uh, for other district members. And I don't know what that right number is, but I, that would be the direction that I would suggest.
Thank you, member Lessons. For the record, President Holloman joined us at 4:08 and I have physically handed the gavel back to him. Uh, President Holloman, as time allows, I would like to be in the queue. Thanks.
Um, thank you very much for starting the meeting and I apologize, Abbott Road is a parking lot this afternoon. Um, and I'm sorry to walk in on the middle of it, but yeah, member Jacobs raised the issue that, that in one hand, we appeared to be zeroing out district travel. But on the other hand, we were still traveling some. And so I, I do want the board to make a, a clear cut distinction. Um, and I'll add that in the past, we had the policy of a member being able to take an out-of-state and an in-state conference once a year. We didn't really track the amount. I, I don't think a board member would be entitled to per diem because we work all the time anyway, right? Uh, to my knowledge, that's not part of it. But I could be wrong. So I'm, I'm just raising that issue, but, um, we would need to, if we are going to continue to travel, um, I would need some guidelines on what could be approved and disapproved as the requests come to me. And we would need to put money in the budget for that. So that's how this discussion came about. Witnessed around with described it very well. Further comment or questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the, the conversation. Um, I agree that in generalized support board travel, um, I was one of the voices who asked that we zero out that line item, uh, during our budget solutions, as I think it's a, um, a really minor and negligible, um, reduction that, um, sends a, a message that we're, we're doing everything we can from top to bottom to, um, reduce costs and frankly, um, continuing education with the advent of online conferences, um, really has transformed since the pandemic. Um, in addition, I've heard directly from legislators and these are folks who staunchly support a BSA increase that, um, our visits to Judo are nearly as productive as when we send students down, um, that they, um, folks who are familiar with, um, ASD specifically and, um, need information, know how to get information both from board members as well as from subject matter experts. And so, um, the biggest value that, um, at least some educators may perceive to, um, some legislators may perceive, um, to have, you know, visiting, uh, the capital might be in the form of fresh perspective, hearing student voices and folks they don't contact regularly through community council meetings or, uh, other communications. Um, in addition, you know, we've gone to Juneau every year as board members, um, since at least 2017 and have failed to secure a BSA increase. And so there's a question of efficacy there too. And so I don't, um, I don't have a ton of heartburn about losing, um, regular travel. I, I do think that it might be wise to have a small amount of funds for the board president, um, to, to go down should there be a need or to send, um, down finance staff. Um, certainly. And so I, I think in general, having a line item is appropriate, but, um, I think a path forward, I, I think I agree with President Holloman that a path forward might look like a formal amendment, um, so that there's clarity, um, and there's transparency there considering the conversation we had on record. I, I think I'm leaning towards it being a very small amount if there is going to be an amount, um, in part because of the, um, new advent of distance learning and the other priorities that we're going to have as we address, uh, budget deficit that's going to continue to remain in the tens of millions of dollars. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, member Bellamy?
Yes, thank you. Um, so whatever we do with this, we, we need to do an amendment to the budget because we agreed to not travel in the 24-25 school year. Um, and we're gonna, and I guess I want to hear from the superintendent or, um, on what that really means. I mean, I would rather have staff be able to travel. Um, and, 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 you know, do curricular minded things and then for the board to travel. But if we are going to change our minds, uh, then we need to change it officially. Um, because the community has heard that we are not traveling in 24-25. Thank you.
Uh, member Bellamy, through the president, uh, from the administration's perspective, essentially what we've done is centralize our travel funds. So that way the majority of travel requests can be rejected and really we can reserve travel for the most essential professional developments or perhaps Gino travel or other needs to, to fulfill district-wide needs. Uh, perhaps the board could fulfill something similar with an amendment. Um, but tha- that's what the administration is doing.
Any other questions or comments? And I think as member Jacobs, uh, noted, this would require, uh, an amendment to the budget. Um, so I, I did want us to be able to talk about it, uh, prior to actually having a motion on the floor in the, in the business meeting. So that's, I think, covers that one. Um, uh, member Higgins, are you?
No, I, I guess I'm, I'm not quite sure what we'll add on it. The, the issue is the board is responsible for making decisions and directions and accountability and, and voice of the public and all that. And, and the type of information coming out of these meetings is something else. I do not know about the urban school district component though, the National School Board Association. That has broken off into a separate component as well. It still attends the National School Board Association. But we're, well, I'm not even aware of everything they're covering. That's gonna be really interesting, uh, within that. I think more board members coming in, attending the NSBA to be able to get a view of what the role of the board is from the NSBA to be able to hear some of the issues and how they're addressing it is pretty comprehensive, uh, in regards to it. And now with AI is really critical. Uh, from my perspective, these are not luxury trips. Uh, they, they, you're really swamped from, from beginning to the end. I don't care about per diem except I don't, I don't want people who may be relying upon per diem to need that to be excluded because they can't afford it. That's my only reservation. So board members can give it up. I think that's great. But I, but I'm hesitant about doing it for that reason because I don't want to exclude some board members and not others. I don't need the per diem. Uh, but I do want the knowledge and, and get the experience of what they're discussing in those meetings. So, um, I'm not sure where we're headed on this, but I, I really do value that. I don't know how many board members really want to travel this year. But one of those three board, one of those two really, the National School Board Association or Cube, the, the urban school district, I really feel that the school district, uh, the school board should be there. And as I said, I really would like to see the superintendent at both of them.
Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair. Uh, so just for clarity purposes and hopefully so the board's on the same page. My understanding as to where we're leaving this conversation is that, um, any board member who wishes to, um, revisit the travel conversation for us specifically, um, should make an amendment to our budget, recognizing that administration has a line item already that's under significant scrutiny through the superintendent's office for administration and staff to travel, that, um, the board would want to bring forward a budget amendment to add money for our purposes for travel. And so that's my understanding as to where we're leaving the conversation. I'm hoping we're on the same page. Thank you.
That's how I would take it at the moment, that, uh, what was discussed in the meeting a year ago is a little bit ambiguous, but, but it seemed that the intent was to not travel, not pay for board member travel. Some of us do travel anyway, uh, out of our own pocket, but, uh, at the moment, I would withhold approval of any travel, uh, and, and just for clarity's sake, I'd prefer that it be a separate line item. Just in a, that would give two different people with authority over a single budget item. And I think the board should make its own statement about, uh, what we should be allocated and the superintendent should work with what's needed for staff, um, on the, on the other side. So, any other questions? Can, member Wilson?
Question versus a comment, um, regarding like online conferences, or if we wanted to go to a conference and, and conferences fees be paid and, and we pay for our own travel. I mean, I, I'm just trying to find out if we wanted to do, for example, an online conference where there's a fee, would that be considered? I always thought that came out of the, the same travel fund. Is that not the case? And, and how would we move forward with that? And?
That might be accurately answered by Mr. Ratmore.
Right, so we just cut the out-of-district travel money. So that would be the hotels, airfare, uh, per diem stuff. Um, so the memberships and the registrations, we left that money intact because we do still need to have some professional development for folks and having that virtual option is gonna be a, a good resolution. We can't come, if we can't do the out-of-state travel.
And Mr. Chair, just a point of information, I, I think, and going off of memory that I believe it's AASB provides us unlimited conferences or, or trainings, or at least a certain number of them as part of our membership. So some of that's built in, but I, we might have to check on that.
Um, if I'm remembering accurately and member Bellamy can back me up on this, they allow every member board, um, a you know, and I'm not sure, it may just be the people on the AASB board get a free conference, one of their conferences per year. Um, and of course, uh, there's one in Anchorage in November. Um, but others may be held at other places in the state. And of course, in-state travel can be some of the most expensive travel there is. Um, so that, I think member Wilson brings up a good point that, um, there may be some conferences that can be done online that don't involve travel, but they do, do still involve a fee. And we would need a, a budget for that as well. So that would be something to factor into that. And, and I'll get clarity on what AASB provides to every member of the boards that are members of them.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Member Bellamy?
Uh, yes, except for the annual conference in November. Members get one, uh, to, uh, conference of their choice. Unless you are on the board, and that's, that's a little bit different. That travels different. But we, you know, I, that, so I would like to offer that. And then I would just like to offer if we could maybe set, get, send this back to finance for a, a more discussion, I guess, and, and, uh, figure out, get more information and because I'm hearing board members want to travel, at least some of them do, and they want to have money to do that. My problem is, is that we already told the community that in light of our budget, we were not going to do that. So whatever we do, let's just be real transparent and let people know that, yeah, well, we said we were going to not travel, but now we are going to travel. Um, and, and then the other question for me is what, that travel money, what, what, where is it gonna come from and what is the impact of using that? What else could we use that money for?
Right, I think a, a referral to finance is an outstanding idea. Um, we'll do that and then, um, if they need more input in a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing seeing none will move to rightsizing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. So as the team gets set up, just a few things. We'll resume our conversation on rightsizing ASD, which again could entail closing a building, repurposing a building and thinking about our footprint long-term. Um, a few objectives for today's briefing. Number one, we want to share board members, the survey data from, uh, the survey that we provided to the community last spring. We'll also share the results of the internal childcare survey that we shared with staff. We'll also preview next steps and share potential criteria that could be used for identifying facilities for repurposing. And lastly, I'd like to share with the board an update on how our students who attended Abbott Loop Elementary are doing today, based on our MAP growth and M-class data. While it was incredibly difficult and emotional to close one of our schools, specific strategies were put in place to keep student well-being and success at the forefront. So I'd like to recap that and delve into the data that we have to date. So now that we're set up, I'll hand it off to our team members.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Um, I've got Eric and, uh, Chris Opitz, and we'll go through this brief as quickly as possible while still trying to cover everything. Um, if you look at this slide, we, we talked about this in the last briefing in June. And many, but not all of these are negative.
That might be accurately answered by Mr. Ratman.
Right. So we just cut the out of district travel money. So that would be the hotels, airfare, uh, per diem stuff. Um, so the memberships and the registrations, we left that money intact because we do still need to have some professional development for folks and having that virtual option is going to be a a good resolution. We can't come, if we can't do the out of state travel.
And Mr. Chair, just a point of information, I I think, and going off of memory, that I believe it's AASB provides us unlimited conferences or or trainings, or at least a certain number of them as part of our membership. So some of that's built in, but I, we might have to check on that.
Um, if I'm remembering accurately, and member Bellamy can back me up on this, they allow every member board, um, a you know, and I'm not sure, it may just be the people on the AASB board get a free conference, one of their conferences per year. Um, and of course, uh, there's one in Anchorage in November. Um, but others may be held at other places in the state. And of course, in-state travel can be some of the most expensive travel there is. Um, so that, I think member Wilson brings up a good point that, um, there may be some conferences that can be done online that don't involve travel, but they do do still involve a fee. And we would need a a budget for that as well. So that would be something to factor into that. And and I'll get clarity on what AASB provides to every member of the boards that are members of them.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Member Bellamy?
Uh, yes, except for the annual conference in November. Members get one, uh, to, uh, conference of their choice. Unless you are on the board, and that's, that's a little bit different. That travels different. But we, you know, I, that, so I would like to offer that. And then I would just like to offer if we could maybe set, get, send this back to finance for a more discussion, I guess, and and, uh, figure out, get more information and because I'm hearing board members want to travel, at least some of them do, and they want to have money to do that. My problem is, is that we already told the community that in light of our budget, we were not going to do that. So whatever we do, let's just be real transparent and let people know that, yeah, well, we said we were going to not travel, but now we are going to travel. Um, and and then the other question for me is what that travel money, what, what, where is it going to come from and what is the impact of using that? What else could we use that money for?
Right. I think a a referral to finance is an outstanding idea. Um, um, we'll do that and then, um, if they need more input in a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing, seeing none, we'll move to rightsizing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. So as the team gets set up, just a few things, we'll resume our conversation on rightsizing ASD, which again could entail closing a building, repurposing a building, and thinking about our footprint long term. Um, a few objectives for today's briefing. Number one, we want to share board members, the survey data from, uh, the survey that we provided to the community last spring. We'll also share the results of the internal childcare survey that we shared with staff. We'll also preview next steps and share potential criteria that could be used for identifying facilities for repurposing. And lastly, I'd like to share with the board an update on how our students who attended Abbott Loop Elementary are doing today, based on our MAP growth and M-class data. While it was incredibly difficult and emotional to close one of our schools, specific strategies were put in place to keep student well-being and success at the forefront. So I'd like to recap that and delve into the data that we have to date. So now that we're set up, I'll hand it off to our team members.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. I've got Eric and Chris Opitz, and we'll go through this brief as quickly as possible while still trying to cover everything. Um, if you look at this slide, we we talked about this in the last briefing in June. And many, but not all of these are negatively impacted when we have so many small schools in the district. Um, we did also talk about, though, that, um, there are pros to having small schools. So there is, in the discussion of rightsizing, a balance between thinking that in every single case, there's no advantage to having some small schools. And I just wanted to be clear on that because sometimes when you're talking about, um, complicated things like this, that that you can get uber focused on one thing. Um, so the goal is not to get rid of every small school in the district. The goal is to look at what rightsizing is really about, which is using our facilities better to meet other needs within the district. Um, and and not solely looking at a list of small schools. So these are the two last briefings in April that we talked about. Um, and then again in June. So we talked about the historical data, the continuing decline over the last many years. Um, many of you probably saw the state's forecast for the next couple decades is showing a continuing decline as well. Um, so I think at every level within the state, um, unless something really changes significantly on the economic front in terms of the amount of mineral wealth that the state can afford, they really are looking at a continuing downtrend. That and birth rates are lower and all those other things we talked about in April. Um, we ended the April one by stressing a focus on education levels of service. If you look at the briefs from a year and a half ago, we actually talked about levels of service in every single brief. It got lost, though, in the discussions about money and and it didn't take the importance in the, in the level of, um, of really the priority of what we should have been talking about. It it just got lost when it just was talking about money. So I think you're going to see, um, in the next many briefings, that we will continue to stay focused on level of service and the many different things that impact that. Uh, we'll also talk about, in June, we talked about the small school pros and cons, which was as for, and there certainly are pros. Um, there are also uh, in our financial situation and declining enrollment, there are, there are legitimate cons. Uh, we went into a deep dive on grade level, the number of sections per grade at schools and how that impacts everything from combo classes to balancing out class size around the district. And then as we get into, um, the discussion tonight, what Dr. Bryant thought was was really important was a discussion on the fact that we have closed a school in recent memory. And it's important to let the board know, um, about the steps that we took to stay focused on students. It was important to collect the data before the school was closed, so we could come back and and basically give a a minor report card on how well we were able to pull this off. And I I think as you'll see, it should give some competent confidence, um, that we've got a lot of folks who who knew what they were doing. They put a lot of things in place, and I think they're going to be pleasantly surprised by the outcome. So I'll be followed by Eric and Chris for the next several slides. Oops.
So we know, if you go back one, um, if we know that closing schools presents risks, um, for student outcomes as well as for staff morale. Um, there's other risks too, but those two in particular can lead to a negative im- impact for our students when we're looking at rightsizing or closings or consolidating schools. We do want all students to have access to a high quality public education. And the main thing for us is to keep students as the focus in all that we do and to build our supports around that mission for our students. So, um, the next slide. With, last year, as we were going through the school consolidation closure conversations, we were focusing on several different things to be able to wrap around supports, to help provide the opportunity for students and to mitigate the risks that, to the greatest extent possible. Um, the communication with families, um, was everything from how we operated with our surveys or town halls or forums, leading to decisions to close the school to communicating the decision of closing the school to the welcoming of students and families to the new school, both in the springtime, once the decision was made, as well as over the summer and into the fall, and then throughout the year. Um, we needed to examine all of our output and input sources. We need to look at our lottery dates, our alignment of those, the planning of the school expo. We need to look at and consider our zone exempted students. Oftentimes, when we think of closing a school, we think of the neighborhood. But there's a population of students that are attending those schools that are zone exempted that you have to consider too, when you're taking care of all students. Um, tools such as our finders, find my school, all of those communication tools that we leverage to help families have access to information, we have to consider when we're planning this. Our communications team, um, provided strong support in carrying out our message to help, uh, lift student voices, to lift staff voices and tell our story as we were working through the school consolidation, as well as when students were moving to Cassoon and moving to Trailside this last year. All of which we worked to, to provide timely communication and make sure it was welcoming for families. Our parent open houses, we integrated business partnerships. Uh, we created both a spring and a fall tour, um, of the school for the open house, as well as providing teacher and student ambassadors to bring kids to their school and walk around the school and feel welcome and engaged at the school. Um, kindergarten roundup this last year was in person, so families that were coming to the school from the other schools had the opportunity to go into the classroom, see the teachers and feel welcome there as well. Our celebrations that we did, um, the celebration of of Abbott Loop was really about about that. It was the celebration of a of a school and the history of the school. And so, um, the partnership about that included business partnerships, uh, key constituents in the area, as well as, uh, the the receiving principals and ministers, ambassadors from those schools to make sure everyone felt welcomed. Um, and then with the celebrations of the welcoming of students, we had students go to the school in the springtime and be part of a field day, part of an activity day with with their new students and new classmates and and teachers. Um, we invited all sectors from the school community to be a part of that, um, and so on. The, the the school student placement was, is probably one of the biggest critical factors in how we operate to help make sure it's successful. Um, again, focusing on what's best for students when we're looking at placements. Um, we use collaboration with the teachers from Abbott Loop in terms of placements. So we had those conversations. We looked at blending classrooms to make sure it wasn't just the Abbott Loop students and the Cassoon students and the Trailside students. It was all students that are coming to Cassoon and all students that are coming to Trailside. Um, the thing that was leveraged, that wasn't really a part of it, but even our work with our professional learning communities and teachers having that ongoing collaboration to help look at what all our students know and need to be able to do at the schools was also another layer of support. Um, the staffing a- aspect of it, we we've structured, um, through our, um, labor and HR team, structured a separate staffing event to help take care of the staff and communicate with them to make sure that they knew that we were intentionally working to help support them into this transition. Um, we use teacher input, um, classroom assignments. We made sure classroom assignments were drafted in the springtime, so as teachers left for the summertime, they knew the grade level tentative based off enrollment, which we guys know about enrollment happening right now. But we knew where likely they were going to be teaching and what grade level they were going to be teaching at. Um, it wasn't really the teachers that were coming from Abbott Loop weren't like the second class people coming in. The deck was leveled, and so the principal said, hey, what's best for students and what grade level should the teachers be teaching at? And the placements were made with that in mind. They leveraged a building induction liaison to make sure people felt welcomed. We use regular principal meetings and coordinating. We met at some points monthly, and then we increased the frequency as we're moving into greater intensity in terms of the planning. We brought in a mentor principals that had previously closed schools, and we have a couple of those in the district to help provide guidance and insights into working through that from communication and all these supports that we put into place. And then focusing on the distractions and mitigating the distractions. So as you're coming into the springtime, making sure when we're closing or looking at closing a school, the teachers and the staff can stay focused on the students that they have in their classrooms. That's, that's critical. And then looking at gaps and pivoting, we made several different pivots and changes and provided timely communication. All of those things are are bigger chunks into what we had to do and what we worked to, to help keep students the focus on on our work.
Okay, um, next up, we just took a a sort of a high level look at some of our main, uh, data. We didn't, we didn't significantly dive in super deeply, but we wanted to make sure that we were, uh, looking for anything that might stand out or cause concern. And so this first slide um, is about attendance, and you can see the top half is from twenty two, twenty three, and then the second one is from twenty three, twenty four. And just to orient you, what we did is we took the students from Abbott Loop and we created a cohort and we followed that cohort through one year. So at the end of that year, um, and and what you can see in the attendance is the daily rate ticked up, you know, eighty seven point seven two to eighty eight point nine two. Uh, but the percentage of students attending ninety percent or more went up about seven percent. Uh, there was a slight decrease there in the eighty to ninety range of four point five, and we also saw just over three percent decrease. Uh, my eyesight, I'm looking at it, I think it's sixty to seventy, if I can read it from here. Um, and so from an attendance perspective, that nothing, uh, stood out that was a a negative. We saw some improvements. Of course, you know how I often will say it's a correlation. We're not really sure exactly why, but it's not a, a, nothing negative stood out whatsoever. And next we look, uh, at map growth reading, uh, similar to the last slide. Um, you can see the twenty two, twenty three results and then the twenty three, twenty four results. One thing to keep in mind is these aren't pure cohorts. For example, second graders that move into third grade, um, are taking it for the first time and so forth. Uh, but what you'll notice is, uh, at the end of Abbott Loop, we had forty five percent at or above the fortieth percentile. And then after they were dispersed to different schools at the end of the following year, forty nine percent of those, uh, students who were actively enrolled in ASD were at or above the fortieth percentile. So again, you know, it's a positive result. I I don't want to read too much into it, but there's definitely nothing, um, concerning that we would see there. And then we looked at map growth math, so very similar. Uh, you can see at the end here, um, at the, uh, in the spring at Abbott Loop in twenty two, twenty three, thirty one percent were at or above the fortieth. And then one year later in their new schools, thirty eight percent of those cohorts, uh, were at or above the fortieth. So about a seven percent increase there. And then finally, we looked at M-class. Um, again, this one's a pretty tricky one because of course we have new kindergartner, uh, well, actually, we don't have new kindergartners, but we have those third graders who moved out of that, um, assessment in the, in the twenty three, twenty four school year. And you can see we maintained at sixty one percent, uh, for the cohort that still took that assessment. And so that's really just a high level, uh, look at some of our key metrics. Uh, again, we wanted to make sure that we were looking for any potential, uh, negative impacts. Um, and so we were very pleasantly surprised by that.
Just had a a quick question. And following the cohorts, did we lose any students?
We did, we didn't specifically analyze that, but we always gain and lose some students, uh, but we did not look at the exact numbers, uh, uh, in terms of a one-to-one match.
Number Wilsons?
Um, thank you very much. I think that the Abbott Loop cohort, um, sort of quick, uh, I wouldn't call it a deep dive, but a quick dive into their cohort is a really interesting perspective. Um, I would encourage you to maybe continue that cohort tracking, see how they, you know, see how that change may affect them over the current year, especially if the rightsizing process is a multi-year. I think it'll be interesting to see how those students, um, you know, adapt, uh, this year and in in potentially in coming years. Um, and then just personally, um, our family has a one student now at one of the receiving schools, and from my perspective at regular drop-offs and pickups, I thought that the integration of students from Abbott Loop to our receiving school was really beautiful, um, and well done, and students were supported, and I thank you for that.
It's a great idea. We could definitely do that.
Member Higgins?
Yeah, the, the, the schools that they were going to, primarily two schools, right, that they were going to. So some of those kids may have stayed in Abbott Loop, uh, uh, school, in the, in the charter school if they wanted to. I know that. Is, is there any sort of, uh, uh, I see the correlation causation a little bit. Is there, did they do better in one school versus the other that they went to? And were there others kids going outside of that district? You, did you try to track everybody or just those two su- two schools?
So we did, we did not delineate which, um, school in terms of the data. We were really just following the cohort from Abbott Loop that again enrolled in ASD. Uh, be- because of course, some, some of those folks, definitely the majority would go to the, uh, two schools, but uh, inevitably, they, there's a handful or more that go to a variety of schools around ASD. So good question, but we didn't track it at that level.
I I know that we have students opting out from their district, going and coming and going every school, and I recognize that. That's what was just kind of curious if there was any why they, why it increased or anything else if we looked at that aspect. Thank you.
Member Wilson?
So I I appreciate you guys following, um, the cohort of students. I think that's, that's awesome, and the data is is amazing to look at. I am curious, um. I I would be curious to see what the data is for the receiving schools for the, those cohort cohort of students to see if their data changed or if it stayed the same. Does that make sense? So the the students, for example, I think somebody mentioned Cassoon. Let's say the students that were at Cassoon already to see if the cohort of students, um, not that didn't, that that were, would have been going to Cassoon anyway if their data had changed. Um, receiving additional students in it.
If I could clarify, the Cassoon students that would already have been there, not including
Correct.
that, oh, I'm sure that we could look at that.
Just curious to see if their data stayed the same or if it changed as well.
Any other questions? Please proceed.
Okay, so Dr. Bryant opened with, uh, he wanted to to walk you through the two most recent surveys we put out. The first one was a rightsizing survey. Um, you know, I know some of the comments that I got back, um, where people still remembered it from a year and a half before. And so I think some of the terms, some of the discussion points were were pretty well known among people who frequently take surveys. Um, so I think that that, uh, there was some level of comfort. You can see that that we had almost sixty two hundred people take the survey, which is really pretty good for an ASD survey. Anything over three thousand is generally considered pretty successful. Um, the vast majority of them did have students in ASD, which you would expect. Um, the vast majority of them also had students in elementary and middle school. Um, and then it certainly paired off, um, as you go into high school. Uh, and as you'll, as you'll see on the upper right, um, very similar to what we saw a year and a half ago. There's a lot of support in Anchorage and understanding of why we would right-size, why we would close some schools, um, but very similar to a year and a half ago. Um, they, they are uncomfortable when it's their school or a school where their students go to. Um, you know, I think I probably could have worded, um, some things a little bit different when they came back and said, don't close um, a school with a special program like Montessori or immersion or whatever. And I think on the next survey, we'll get a little bit of clarif- clarity on, was it the immersion program? Was it the building or was it the immersion program that you want to make sure would still continue? Because I probably could have asked a couple of different questions on that to get a little bit of clarity, but by and large, seventy one percent um, concurrence that that we should right-size. And I don't think any national level, state or local politician has ever gotten a seventy one percent. Um, so I I I feel pretty confident that, that the public was expecting this, um, based off things we said throughout the year and that they're in support in general. And then, of course, as part of the survey, um, we really put out a a number of things that really doesn't have um, a direct tie to whether it's a small school or not. Um, class size did and and frequently does, um, come out at the very top of the priorities. I was, I was surprised that the level of service at schools, um, really was the second. But I was also pretty pleased that I think a lot of people who took the survey either went online, either saw the videos that where we discussed it, or saw the briefings or saw the board, board meetings and or videos. And of course, as I stated, we talked about level of service throughout the last time we tried, we, we tried to go to the community about, um, closing and combining schools. So if you look here, I did do just a a quick summary as a takeaway one pager. Um, the public does support rightsizing, or at least those who took the survey. Um, but there's certainly a very strong desire, as expected, to retain special programs, and you can see the top ten community priorities.
Number Wilsons?
Maybe I'm jumping the gun here, but, um, I feel like school boundary lines are a big part of this. They have to be a part of this process. And were, you know, was that a question that was asked in the survey? You know, something like, how comfortable would you be with, you know, moving? I don't know how you would phrase that.
I think you're going to see school boundaries, um, appropriately, but be put in when you're discussing the metrics and the rubrics for closing schools because for closing schools, because there's a real discussion that needs to be made on school boundaries. We had a board member, uh, multiple times talk about can we fix everything with school boundaries? The reality is, as long as parents have choice, school boundaries, you can never confirm exactly whether that boundary change ended with the result that you wanted. I mean, look at all the alternative programs across the city. If, do you stop P, any future newcomers going to that school, that alternative program? Well, no, we've, we've certainly never talked about immersion ends this year. And then next year, they're all going to be within their boundary and they're going to stay where they live. But we don't do that. We will always have school choice. So you can't get a magic fix with school boundaries. Where we look at school boundaries is when we start looking at, when we closed Abbott Loop, we readjusted the school boundaries. You look at the major arterial roads and whether transportation is going to be affected if you push it beyond its kernel, uh, current boundary. You look at the schools where there's a, by and large, the students are going to go to. And you look at reforming those boundaries. And then as you look at the schools that combined, if they're still at seventy percent, of course, you're going to keep looking at that boundary and expanding it out. Um, but maybe not at the exclusion of taking another school down to ten percent. So it's a pretty complicated thing to think that you can close a high school and re-boundary the district and fix all of our problems. It's, it's really not, um, it's not the easiest one to enforce because parents always have a choice. And the people with a choice are generally the parents with vehicles and not the people who have to ride buses. And so there's, there's other discussions when that is your preferred method of fixing what ultimately is six thousand less students than we had ten years ago. And we've closed a, a couple of schools, right? I mean, certainly nowhere near six thousand. So it, it's really a, it's really not realistic to think that school boundaries is the first thing you can do to fix when you have vacancy rates where we should have, could hold upwards of six thousand more students. Um, but we will put that in a brief and try to do a deep dive on what is a boundary change? How do you do a boundary change? What are the, what are the impacts of a boundary change? Um, and, and I, and you'll see that in the upcoming, but I know, I know it's been raised. Can we just change all the boundaries? No, we're still going to have six thousand less students than we had before we changed the boundaries, right? That doesn't change the enrollment and it doesn't change the overall capacity of our schools. And it doesn't change the overall district utilization. It only shifts around a zone on a map and you change where the bus goes effectively. So I, I would discourage people from believing that you can make up for six thousand shortfall in enrollment merely by changing boundaries. That's six thousand's there and the boundary doesn't change that at all. And so I didn't make that a priority, although I do know we, we have had a board member bringing up half a dozen times says, are we going to discuss boundary change? Yes, we are. Of course we are. E- every time we look at schools, we're looking at the boundaries. But it will never be able to change enrollment, which is what's driving this. And I, I don't know if that explains it.
I appreciate that and I don't want to derail this conversation because it's important. Uh, but I have spent a, a little bit of time over the past few days looking at the early enrollment data and staring at the middle school CIP map and, um, just thinking that we have some disparities in how those middle schools are used. Um, and it, I just want to maybe seed it out there that, um, it seems like adjusting the middle school boundaries could better, uh, could provide better service and better experiences, uh, across the board.
And, and not only will we look at adjusting middle school boundaries, but we'll also look at as part of right sizing. And I think it was in, one of the last slides in the June brief is, or might even have been the April brief. Um, do we look at K eights and close an elementary school? Bring it into a middle school. We, we've successfully done K eights in the past. There's a number of things that can certainly change the capacity and utilization of schools that have a much easier ability to control again than just looking at boundaries. So we will, we will look at boundaries, I assure you. Um, but it's not a, it's not a, let's fix the district solution, but it will be looked at.
I'd like to insert a question. The move of sixth grade to mid-level, was that part of positioning for right sizing? Was that a factor in, in the district moving that direction?
Um, I can take that, President Hallman. So the answer is no. So we actually came about the idea of sixth grade to middle school through the twenty-twenty-two budget development process. Because initially we'd proposed going away from the middle school model to save funds. But it came out through discussions that we actually strongly value the middle school model. Um, we need to preserve that. And from that conversation, we discussed, well, what if we expanded the middle school model's benefits to more students by integrating the sixth graders into all of our middle school buildings? Because there already were best practices at our six, eight schools, um, historically. So, uh, that, that's where that came from. But a good question, as the two things are often conflated, but they came from very different places.
Thank you. Member Higgins.
I guess I always like to put a little caveat on here, and that is that all of these are based upon the funding level we're getting from the state. Because our class sizes were so much larger than, than lower forty-eight was considered to be with Pikes Oldham is appropriate. And so when we look at our capacity, six thousand kids, we've got hundreds of teachers we would have if the state were to be adequately funding us. So I just, we can't ignore that particular aspect, I don't think. And at least acknowledging it when we're talking about this in front of the public, that absolutely funding from the state is a factor that, that plays into this. Cause we know the capacity, the requirements for a number of classrooms would go up by hundreds. Thank you.
Any other questions? With that, please continue.
So the second survey that we put out, and we've been planning this survey for a long time as well as looking at facilities, because we knew there was vacant space to put in commercial childcare, knowing that if you can reduce their overhead expenses, um, that very likely the business model of running a child daycare business would mean that you wouldn't be paying, you, they wouldn't have to charge the same amount to make the same level of profit. What we didn't know was, other than discussions with people we work with, was how big is the childcare problem in ASD? And, um, I, I don't think you're going to be surprised a, at all by the results. Um, I'll tell you that, that even in the month of July, we had teachers with a contract decide to resign because they couldn't get childcare. So it, it not just affects teachers. And I'll talk you through a little bit about an hourly employee and the impact Anchorage's average, or actually their lowest possible childcare has on those employees. But we did need to get a feel, um, for, for where, where is ASD sitting in this? And over half had a concern with current childcare, um, whether it's a, um, you know, one of their family members that's not directly them or within, um, the family of the ASD employee. And seventy-six percent did support using ASD space to have a current childcare, um, operation, if it could provide affordable childcare. Seventy-nine percent believe that Anchorage's childcare is expensive. And, and I'll tell you, as, as we looked at it, and I had already talked to Thred and a number of other organizations and Mary LaFrance's, um, transition team on childcare for the city. And it really does, the, the cheapest you're probably going to find is twelve hundred a month. And it goes upwards to the other extreme, up to eighteen hundred dollars a month. And that's the amount of money in Anchorage it costs to get childcare. Um, the top three importance, of course, are convenience, affordability and safety. But when you talk to the employees, the reason they don't have it, um, is one, the waiting list can be a year and a half long because childcare is a problem. In Eagle River, Chugiak, they're down to one childcare center. I was told by, um, one of the representatives in that town. And Anchorage has also lost a lot. So even if you had the money, getting childcare is certainly problematic. Yes, sir.
Member Higgins.
This is a nationwide problem. It's all over the place. But the issue is not just space. It's really, it's staffing, right? You can't get individuals to, for the childcare. So the centers that are closed, they're closed because they don't have people to even work there. So I, I appreciate the emphasis on the criticality of this. It, it's one of the reasons why we, we're going back to so many families with a one-family income, because a third of it goes towards childcare and it's so expensive. I just don't know if we use the housing, will we be able to make it cheaper or be able to provide the staffing differently or something? Uh, it's an interesting question. I, I don't have spec and answer right now, but I'm just trying to let everybody know if they think, if, if we get too optimistic about it, there are a lot of issues associated with this.
You know, realistically, one, I, I'm not optimistic that on day one, it's going to be wildly successful. You have current childcare providers in multi-year leases. You have childcare providers that are, were going to be supremely interested, but they want to see someone else do it first. There's going to be every variance of the childcare industry that's going to see whether this looks like a good deal for them. Where it does help them is because you have lower overhead, you can pay more for salaries and maybe entice someone to come work for you. And I'd like to phone a friend like Kelly did earlier. Only I'd like to pick Marty, who can talk about another state level program that might tie directly into academies of Anchorage to also help the community.
Thanks, Jim. Um, yeah. One thing that you may be aware of that was in, uh, the ADN recently was the emergence of teacher apprenticeships in the state of Alaska. So, um, the Federal Department of Labor recognized teaching as an apprenticeship area, which freed up federal dollars. They're then partnering with states for that money to flow through, um, to districts and universities and sponsorship organizations that want to support the idea of a teacher apprenticeship, which is where someone would work and they would have the opportunity to earn credit. They would potentially have dollars that would help them offset the cost of tuition, their own childcare while they're going to school, transportation fees, computers, books. We're still, I'll say upfront, learning a lot about this. This is just sort of on the cutting edge here in Alaska. But we did have a, a meeting with the University of Alaska Department of Education, and they have multiple tiers of apprenticeship. And the tier one apprenticeship is really centered around allowing somebody to go to school to get enough education that they would qualify to be certified to work in a daycare environment. And there's probably a natural partnership there with our academies of Anchorage and the education programs that we're looking in those pathways, where we could have students sitting in classes where they're getting dual credit and leave their junior or senior year with that certification and potentially come and work for us immediately. Second level apprenticeship would be preparing paraprofessionals for us. And then eventually we get to the third level apprenticeship, which is actually, um, that, that teacher group that we know we have a lot of vacancies around as well. So don't have all the information yet, just learning a lot about ourselves. But we're pretty excited and we think it dovetails with a lot of these conversations that the board is having right now.
Thank you, Marty.
Member Higgins.
Sorry.
Oh, okay. Back to you, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, um, so here's the, uh, the second half of the survey. And you can see that the bulk of those who took the survey naturally would take it because they have children. Um, but they're certainly concerned with being able to find, and they, and they definitely will need childcare. Ninety-four percent indicated a challenge, um, whether it was a major challenge, which was the bulk, or some challenge with childcare availability, um, irregardless of affordability, which goes back to what Member Higgins said. This is not going to be something that when we implement can, can balloon up like a skyscraper very quickly. Um, but with a number of other things in place to include what the municipality is trying to do, I think that there will be some developmental personnel to be able to fill positions if we can get them created. Um, and then finally, um, reinforce that there is significant interest. So I, I, I did some math today, which, um, just to give you an idea of what does this mean for an ASD employee? Because I was curious, hadn't actually, um, figured it out. So I took a twenty-dollar hourly employee that works in a school. Now, we know that cafeteria managers start at fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Um, the bus drivers at twenty-five, a lot of totem positions hover around the twenty, twenty-dollar per hour mark. So let's pick a, a totem person at twenty dollars per hour. They make twenty-nine thousand dollars a year gross, and it's really like twenty-nine thousand, three hundred, depending on how much, um, service they have. When you take out social security and Medicare, federal taxes, and you take out PERS, if they don't have healthcare as well, if their spouse can have healthcare, they go from twenty-nine thousand dollars a year down to twenty-one thousand a year. If you were to have two kids at twenty-one thousand dollars a year and you were at the very low end of the spectrum and you don't pay for healthcare, at the very low end of the spectrum, you're going to pay six hundred dollars more for childcare in nine months at twelve hundred dollars per kid than you made. So I don't know that this, I, I mean, I don't think this is the panacea, but I think we have to do this. We have to provide an opportunity for growth in an area, or I believe we do, that, that has a chance of providing affordable childcare for employees. Because if you're making twenty-five dollars an hour, you can almost pay for your medical. Um, well, you could pay for your medical for sure. But at, at twenty dollars an hour with two kids, family who can watch them, it's, it's a struggle and it's citywide. Um, the mayor, the mayor saw, we talked on the transition team task force, it's citywide. And, you know, we, we walk around and we wonder, why is no one applying for our jobs? You know, we have caperias vacant, we have BPOs vacancies, we have all these positions. And although childcare is not the only one of them, it certainly is a challenge if, if you have to pay more than what you make, um, just to work. So that's why a year or so ago, we started looking at childcare and looking at buildings and talking to Thred and talking to the city and the state people was to try to get us to be smart enough to be able to make this transition this year during the right sizing brief, to make that as a very, very high priority need for the district that has nothing to do with whether, um, you know, this isn't about using the space correctly, although we have an opportunity, so why not? It's about providing a reason for people to work for ASD.
Mr. Chair. Just want to point out, um, we have reached our normal conclusion for our work session. I would, um, hope that we could extend our work session for another fifteen minutes if there's no objection, so we can continue the conversation.
Yeah.
Without objection, we will continue for fifteen so that, uh, they can wrap up. Thank you.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll talk quickly for the rest. Um, so I wanted to look at really the last time ASD was in a position like this with state funding. And it really was two thousand nine and ten when, um, they had reset the bar in that general timeframe. They reset it again in fiscal year sixteen, seventeen timeframe. And then of course, you know, since then, it hasn't really been reset. Um, it's really been one-time money and a thirty-dollar BSA increase. So I thought that would be a good comparison. So when you look at, um, fiscal year ten, we were getting in the formula, not ten thousand eight hundred ninety-four per student, but that was what we got, um, per student. And we had ninety-three facilities and eighty-seven schools. When you look at two thousand seventeen, um, when they had to increase the BSA because they were in a very similar position to where we were last year, um, in buying power on the far right, although they did get more money per student in buying power, when you go to the Bureau of Labor and Statistics, they still, even with an increase, made about three hundred dollars less per student in total buying power. Then you jump into FY twenty where, um, you know, we had COVID, we had some additional money coming in. Um, the buying power at that point, um, was still lower than fiscal year ten. And then by fiscal year twenty-three, it's over a thousand dollars, eleven hundred dollars less in buying power per student than what we had. So when you look at facilities and no one wants to talk about how much it costs to keep facilities maintained, um, but, but we do, and, and our vehicles, our white fleets, all these other things that aren't classrooms. Um, we have eleven hundred dollars less in buying power than, than we had when the, you know, the BSA was set in two thousand ten. And so it does impact, um, do we keep all these facilities? Do we keep putting more money into aging facilities? Um, and, and this isn't the only reason. It really is education level of service. But a buying power difference of eleven hundred also impacts education level of service. So I wanted to do a quick slide. You're going to see these all in the next survey. So I wanted to do a quick slide. You're going to see these all in the next survey. And you'll see some more stuff as well. We'll have more than one survey. These are possible criteria that we'll be talking to the community about closing, combining and repurposing facilities. And I kind of put it into three buckets. So when you look at facilities, you're looking at the deep dive we gave you last fall on education adequacy index, facility condition index. And we did multiple other deep dives on life cycle of building and things like that. But, but we will have to re-educate others into understanding what these even are as we're asking for their input on whether they think that should be a metric that's, that's going to be used. Otherwise, it's pretty disingenuous to throw an acronym out and say, hey, what do you think of this? We need to make sure that it's very deliberate that we posted on the website. We talk about what, what those metrics are and then we get their feedback. The one new one that we didn't do last time was looking at whether our facilities can adequately support something else. So we're spending about 150,000 a year on warehouse leasing right now. We're spending 377,000 a year for the ACT program. So we have all these other things that if we can fit them into a facility where there's space, it's cost avoidance. It's maybe not a clear savings, but as you're looking at the kind of deficit that we're looking at, all of these things should play into the rightsizing plan. Again, going back to, you don't close every, every school in the district that's short 10 kids. We look at all the needs of the district and how we can best use them. Under education levels of service, I, I put boundary changes, knowing it would come up. And, and can the boundary change accomplish the same person, purpose as closing a school? And it just depends, but we will certainly look at it. And those other education level of service metrics. Under efficiency, the realities of efficiency are we're short staff. We're short right now five cafeteria managers. If we had two less schools hypothetically, we might be short three cafeteria managers. We have all these related services with large numbers of vacancies that are spreading across numerous schools that if you could spread them across less schools, they could spend more time in every school. And all of those really are efficiencies because you lose travel time as people are bouncing down the road with their, with their traveling suitcase. So we will look at that as well and then you'll see us come up with a rubric and then we'll talk to the board about that. So this is kind of, these are the next steps for me. The first one is to strengthen enrollment. We'll know in a few weeks, couple of weeks, what we really believe the enrollment will be by school. Because the last thing you want to do is take last January's projections, which is what I built the April brief around and and ask the board to make decisions on what we thought would happen last January. So we need pre-K kindergarten. We need all the kids to be starting. We'll, we'll firm that up and then we'll go to the next survey, which we'll be talking about metrics. We'll look at capacity. One thing I've learned in the past year is and, and some of the board members will, will be certainly surprised, I was, as I looked at the rules for space utilization. What most people don't know is when you have a lot of vacant space within the district's footprint, it counts against you for all the capital grants because there's a formula that says, why am I paying you to rebuild a roof when you have so much capacity? You really should tear a school down. And those actually count against you in the point factor. But as you dig deep and you dive into what's really behind it, the reality is we have a significant chunk of Chugiak and East that have been used for maintenance for the last 30 years. We can actually subtract that from capacity and make us more successful for capital grants. And the reason I wanted to bring this up though, we haven't, you're going to see the utilization space at Chugiak when we get this locked with the state increase, even though the number of students may not have increased. It's not because we were less than honest in the past. It's that we were using the numbers that we've always used. And then once I realized that we could take out for education support and we could take out for maintenance. And now you're really much more accurate into what Chugiak High School really can fit. It gives you a better picture, but it will change the utilization. It isn't smoke and mirrors. It is trying to position the district to be competitive for capital grants and showing the public that really it's 70 instead of 60 or whatever the number is. So I just wanted to, to bring that up early and I will bring it up again when you see the changed numbers and there's, there's no magic tricks. It's, it's in the regs. We can do it. We just haven't. Next though, what I will ask the board, and this will be discussions, whether it's work sessions or other, what are the guardrails that the board expects? Does the board expect that there should be no school closed if it has X program or Y program in it? That you can't move a special program if it's one of these? It could, that school is automatically exempted from any discussions in the future. It'll help us as we're narrowing down and picking the schools for rightsizing for either purposes, different purposes or combining, it, it will help us if the last thing I want to do is bring up a list and Dr. Bryant's bring up a list and then three of them get shot down immediately because now we know that those three were never going to get a go at first base. So we will have that discussion and it'll be uncomfortable for some, but we need to have that discussion and we don't need a vote. I just would need a thumbs up to say, yeah, we're, we're good for this, we're good for that in general. You know, everything we do is four votes or more, right? That's, that's the rules we live by. And that'll help us finalize the rubric. And then after that, we'll be able to complete the assessment of the district and provide a rightsizing plan. So you've seen this a couple of times now. It hasn't changed. We're really in the August, September enrollment piece, final survey. September through, you really should expect in October, the names of the schools. At least on the first part of the plan, we might be finalizing year two or year three. But certainly in October, I would expect to have something in front of the board. Because ultimately we do need the board to vote and approve something in December. Because we've got to build a budget around whether schools or programs are in leased facilities or not, or if those schools will exist in the next year. So just like last time, in December, it will, there will be a vote on the rightsizing plan.
Member Lawson.
Thank you. So a question about process for board members. In order for the board to issue guidance to, to generate guardrails, I mean, are you, are you tasking us with homework? Say come back to us in two weeks with your thoughts and then we'll talk about it. I mean,
Yeah, you're going to see a couple of briefs and I'm going to lay out a bunch of options and I'm going to, I'm going to look for a general consensus. It doesn't mean that you can't change your mind later. I mean, everyone, we've seen that occur before. It just means general guidance to build the metrics in the rubric so we can go through the initial analysis and not be so far out in left field that we surprise the board. And, and of course, we don't like it when we're surprised either, but we, it'll really be those open discussions like we had last time. Where the board was just giving, you know, really head nods and thumbs up on in general, we're okay with you going in this direction.
Any other questions? Oh, Member Bellamy?
Yes. So I don't know if any of the board members, any of us have all the details we need to create the guardrails. I mean, what makes sense to me is for us to task the superintendent with bringing forth a plan. Whatever, whatever that plan is, whether it's rightsizing, whether it's boundaries, whatever it is. Because you guys have all the pieces. I, I just don't, I don't know that we can.
So what I'm picturing is taking the things that the community said they don't want to lose, which is special programs or specifically immersion, Montessori, ABC, things like that. And putting a slide up and just saying, are these programs that the board wants to continue and ensure that they continue? It's not going to be written like a guard, not a board guardrail. It's not going to be written like the guardrails for the board goals. It will just be acknowledgement that there are programs that we either much prefer to retain and not look at closing. But it's, it's more, I guess I could have used the word boundaries maybe on things that, that you really, you, you feel like we're a large enough district that we don't need to go there. So there'll be a number of things up on a slide. We'll talk through them and just find out is the board comfortable retaining parent choice on special programs? It would be things like that. It would also be a discussion on if a school was in the last round and it was unsuccessfully or successfully, depending on who you are, retained. Is that school automatically off limits? Because it was brought up at multiple board meetings from people who testified that if we were saved, that means you can't pick this school again. But these were coming from just a handful of people. But I do want to confirm that just because it wasn't closed last time, doesn't mean that it's off the list. So it'll be simple, really just a handful of things, Margot, where I just want to get a feel for where the board sits and then we move forward and finalize.
And if I may just put a bow on this specific point to Member Bellamy's questions, yes, we'll do a lot of heavy lifting. We'll put forward an initial product, if you will, for the board to review. But just know the first time that you see it, it's an opportunity to collect your feedback and understand your values so we can adjust accordingly so that it fits the, the desire of the board. So we will do the heavy lifting for you.
We are.
I would still rather have a superintendent come forth with a plan, but that's just me. We can do it however.
Thank you, Member Bellamy.
If, you know, if I can be so bold to make some kind of a request, it would be that we have time to process. You know, whether, so whether that's 72 hours or we get an email saying these are the things we'd like you to, you know, we've identified as potentially within a rubric, come to your meeting, come to the meeting with your thoughts ready about these rather than, you know, four o'clock, ready, set, go. I appreciate the time to, to reflect on something of this gravity.
I'm sorry to have to cut this short, but I do need to ask for a motion for us to recess into executive session.
So moved to moved into executive session for the purpose of uncontested student hearing, legal updates, negotiations and contracts.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. We are in recess for executive session.
Is it too late to do this?